We're almost at average for the year for rainfall totals. So that certainly is good. And anything that we take beyond that, our precipitation is going to increase our groundwater levels. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, sorry about that. Thank you very much. Looking forward.
I'm Mr. Gary. Though the city's going to be on the hook to defend Ricardo because he has to have possible conflicts of interest. These poor taxpayers here, another problem for them. Litigation's nothing new to the city council though, is it? The signs that they're hanging for the political things around town. Citing people for freedom of speech, that's going to bring litigation too. More money down either way. Or Ricardo's picture on the sign. I don't say what it is, but everybody knows anyway. And then, and then that's waste of the code enforcement. It's time to run around and trying to get people to take this sign down. But that's nothing new for the city of Alvin Park. This city says, "We welcome everybody to come and speak here, but if you cross us, then we send the code enforcement to discourage you." And I know firsthand. I had two visits after I spoke here. And we even got a letter from San Francisco for Reynolds that this city knew I didn't even have to try and discourage me. That third letter from the code enforcement was the clincher. I made it quite after that to speak every chance I got here. That's your mode of operation. If you don't like certain people to speak here. You say you want everybody to speak, but oh God help them, they're speaking against you. You live in this city. And then there's something else coming to my attention. You're bothering, the code enforcement's bothering that man over there in 4137 if you any. About the concrete that he has all over the place over there. Aren't we in a drought? What would you care whether there's concrete in front of the front yard? There's front yards all over Alvin Park with the concrete over. But because he didn't bend to your will, tear that down and build a building over there, he moved his business to Azusa. Congratulations, you lost out on all that tax money. Because you wanted him to tear down that house there and build a commercial building there. And he basically said, "No." He moved his business to Azusa. And now they're getting tax revenue from his business up there. And Alvin Park, you don't learn. You drove a good business out because you chose to make it difficult. You're still harassing him over there. I guess you need more work with Mr. Tuttel and Paul Cook. He bothered him. And that business probably has deeper pockets than Alvin Park has. Multi-million dollar profits. So just keep bothering people about stuff that's unnecessary. Mr. Tofoya, don't be busy or... Oh, time's up already.
Okay, you're my first question. Okay, move on. Public communication.
John Rios, resident and current citizen. The last media was here, Mayor. They turned around and called us liars. They try to hate this and that and everything. Every time we greet someone up, we have proof of things like that, okay? What's happening now is that the word around town is that "El Rata." You know what that is, right? That's the little ratitos. Has them all over the place in every department. The way they have to do what you tell them because you're the big El Rata. Okay? That's one of the things that the citizens right now, they see everything on YouTube. And everything, we put everything in there. Everybody comes around, "What happened to that thing on Ramona? What happened to that thing in front of the skid?" How come they're knocking down the trees? How come they're knocking down the trees over at the nature park? Supposed to be a nature park. Not demolished, three, four trees right there because you have to put some in there. Okay? The roof hasn't been finished. There's wire already inside of it, so you're going to have to replace the whole thing. I don't blame yourself. You only do what you're told. Check. YouTube, take a ride around town at least once a week to see exactly what's happening. The city guy over here next to the figurine, next to Alvin Park, was full with construction things. According to my information, the city doesn't see no construction things. You got signs, you got dirt all over the place and everything. Okay? I don't know what happened, that they moved it. Okay? One of the things that we've been noticing in everything, the citizens, is that there's a lot of conflict of interest, okay? And those are the things that I told you like the black man. Last year, it was just the beginning for us to be okay with what you guys are doing. Now we're really going to go after you guys. Okay? Like I mentioned, when Curios saw him in another black car and everything, "Are you spying on me?" No, I'm not spying on you. There's seven different cars that we pull around. And most of them are retired people from the city.
Greg Talbott, business owner. It seems we have a serious conflict yet within us with Monica Garcia and her new boyfriend, Patrick Bobko. He's an attorney that works and represents Richards, Watson, and Gershon. She happens to have a relationship with this man. She was also seen at the San Barbara conference with him. And I don't think his firm would be very happy to find out that she's dating him while they're trying to do business in the city of Alvin Park. This is a conflict of interest. Keep your personal relationships separate from the city business. Also, the, with her showing interest in this guy and giving business to the city, she needs to abstain whenever you're giving this firm business. It should be with the other four. Then we also have the police chief thing that came to my attention that you guys voted on on Monday. And this is a totally a flawed deal, complete. You guys brought up your own boards. You didn't bring in an independent board and take their opinion on this thing. When this came in, this guy here was all brought in by Manny Lazzano. He came in, did all through the city here, went through the church with Ricardo Pacheco to introduce him. Nobody else that came in here had a chance. Now, with the chief, the new one, Sosido, that you're trying to get in here, he obviously hasn't checked with the background that on police chiefs in the city of Alvin Park don't ever retire here because they get fired. So they usually have anywhere from one, two years, maybe five years. We all know why you're bringing him in. He's Latino and he's going to be a puppet, just like Hansel was. But she was a female puppet, but Pacheco attacked her and he helped get rid of her. Now, we're going to tell you that if you bring in this puppet, we are going to do just like we did with Hansel. The citizens and everything and the groups and the business owners, we're not going to, we're not going to stand for this. You guys did this all on your own. We know why you did it. And we're going to stand up to it. And we're going to create as much havoc as we can with this. Because I'm very unhappy with the way this thing was done. And we all know how it was done. So you didn't hide anything on this. The other thing is the oversight committee that I went to and I notified you, Mayor, that it was an illegal committee because you were on the board and Rose Tam was on the board. If that, and I've also sent a letter to the county stressing my opinion. I talked to the county worker that was there and she taped it, took my name down. And we will be hearing from now because this board is illegal, what you guys are doing. You can't be on there and neither can Rose Tam when she's doing the finals. Thank you. Thank you. Move on. Public communication.
Hi, good evening, Mayor. Sorry, I'm sorry. My name is Abel. Business owner for twenty years. And in Alvin Park for almost forty years. There is someone here because I received a letter from Alvin Park that I have to remove my fence. My force of power is powering behind my building. What are on my cards? That's why I'm here to, what I should have to, I speak still and why I used to, still three times. Have to protect my building. I don't know what can I do.
Once you finish, just give us the letter and let's see what we can do.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. You can give it. I want to...
A bit. Disculpa. Te está pidiendo que por favor le des la carta a la ciudadanía. Gracias.
Gracias, thank you. Oh, Terry News.
Good evening, Terry News. I'm representing the Alvin Park Business Association. I wanted to come tonight to invite everybody to the February ninth, with the Alvin Park. We're going to be at the courtyard near it. They're hosting the breakfast. It's going to be featuring Measure Reach, the sales tax initiative for the homeless. So we're going to have someone from LA County Homeless Initiative is going to come out and speak to businesses and residents about this upcoming initiative on the March ballot. So I want to invite everyone, if they're interested in coming, please go to our website, alvinparkbiz.com and register or let me know. A lot of interesting things happening this year with the Business Association. We're going to have the Make a Ball in Park one month and then the next month we will have a mix. So we're bringing back baby mixers. So we're hoping that people see all you there. We're also going to be hosting a salute to heroes luncheon where we're going to honor, I mean, police, firemen, ambulance workers, emergency physicians, emergency care workers that are doing great things in our cities and we'll see with that also. I think I'm just going to leave that out if that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Terry News. Margarita Vargas.
Just, um, welcome. I just, uh, an observation. Um, I don't know if it's important or not, but to follow the agenda. Because you first do the report of the close session before you open the meeting. And I think you have to go over the meeting, the education, the place, the book, and then the report from the close session. I know you don't have the roof, the rubber, or anything, but I think that following the agenda is important. So, if that's all I have.
Thank you, Margaret.
One other thing. Uh, how many more trees are they going to cut? Because other days I saw them cutting a really pretty magnolia tree. There was really a lot in my day. So, um, I can't really say, but I see those trees all in that line and they can be saved.
Sam, if you could let her know after, please. All right. Okay, so move on with public communication.
Mayor, I need, uh, because she mentioned regular trees in public session. I think maybe we need to just make sure we clarify with the public that we are having to change out the trees. You want to just sort of briefly explain so you understand?
Hold on. Okay, anyone else who should speak? Okay, now, exactly bothering you. Come on up. Good evening.
Good evening. Hi. I'm here because I would like the city to reconsider their position on marijuana. I attended the special meeting where you briefly discussed manufacturing and cultivation, but I didn't really learn, like, if you guys were going to move forward or what was happening with that. Um, I would like you to do some homework and maybe research a little on dispensing. Dispensaries and, uh, I don't know, charge a tax. I would like to open up a dispensary in the city. But I don't want to go and I would like you guys to, you know, go through the motions of maybe putting someone in charge of, I don't know, someone I can talk to about this topic. Because I feel like it's a little sensitive and a little embarrassed to be up here.
That's okay. That's fine. I could, once you finish, I could refer you to someone because we are continuing on with different meetings that are open to the public for any criticism.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome. So if someone completes it, post your address. All right. So, or stated publicly, actually, so better yet. So at this point, anyone else who should speak? And then I will now officially declare the public communication. I told, at this point, Sam, go ahead and cover that one part for Mrs. Parches.
Yeah, hi, Mrs. Parches. So we have a project, one of them, I started on January 23rd, where we are replacing a lot of these landscape and irrigation systems in our center medias with drop tolerant landscaping and water efficient irrigation systems. We started moving trees last week. I think we're done on Ramona and Adilla. And we're going to be doing Alvin Park, which is the next, the next meeting that we're going to be working on. Amont Road, we have a small meeting down there. We've already finished removing the trees there. All in all, we're going to be removing a total of about nearly 200 trees. So we're going to be putting back 400, over 400 trees, including 200 phones.
All right, and thank you very much, Andrew. Do the report on the candidates meeting. When is the next follow-up? Our CEO, Mr. Gershon.
I want to comment. He's arranging another presentation in the future.
Yes, I believe our next presentation will be February 15th, at the February 15th council meeting. But if you have any questions about the process or what we're talking about, feel free to call me in my office. After the meeting here, I'll come down and give you my phone number, okay?
All right, thank you very much. All right, so at this point, we're going to go and go into the...
Mayor.
Yes, yes, that's the number. Oh, okay, that's it.
Yes, thank you. I do need to state for the record that there is no conflict of interest, okay? I have never dated Patrick Bobko, nor do I intend to date Patrick Bobko. And, you know, this, this person that just got up likes to come and discredit, you know, actions based on false pretenses and just misinformation. And that's so absurd. It would be like me saying because I saw our mayor protest, Susan Rubio hanging out with Greg Tuttle, that they are dating. Um, and let, let me, I'm sorry. Okay, it has been sent, okay? Uh, I mean, it's absurd. And, um, let me just read a document here that will also speak to the verbal abuse of this person. I think it's important because this person likes to get up and discredit me and others, but doesn't like when I read this, this document, which is a very important document, and speaks to his character. It's a, it was a restraining order filed by Sheila Ann Tuttle versus Greg Sebastian Tuttle, his former wife, his ex-wife. And she says, "I, Sheila Ann Tuttle, hereby state and declare under penalty of perjury, the following is true and correct." And she goes on to say, "I am seeking this order on an ex parte application based on the fact the respondent has caused physical harm to our daughter and is mentally abusing both of us to the point we are in fear of our lives." I think that these are tactics that he uses against women in his life and continues to do as we heard this evening. Uh, when I make a decision as a council member, I make it based on my community. And I just wanted to state for the record that there is no conflict of interest. And I am not dating Patrick Bobko, nor do I intend to. And I think it's just absurd that that will be raised here. Thank you.
Let me just ask my, I think it's, it's not just how it continues and obviously has a trend against women. And it's unfortunate that you're the target here in the city as well. All right. Okay, so at this point, I'm going to go ahead and go over to the, from San Collins. Yeah, items one through, three. One of three. Four, four, excuse me, sorry. All right, one of four council members wishing to pull any items?
Mayor, if we could go further, I just, I'm sorry, one of these delayed reactions. Can I ask, Sam, I know that you said that we're going to take down 200 trees and replace it with 400. But just to be clear, that the trees that are being taken down are the ones that we deem to be sick, diseased. And so they're not taking out any healthy trees, correct?
Correct. We are removing trees that are dead or, or dying. And those trees that will not survive with the new water efficient irrigation system.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure that the public knows that we definitely were very vocal about protecting the trees. But because of our limited restrictions by our state, we have to determine which ones needed to go and which ones needed to stay. So we will be protecting the ones that are, that are healthy and will last for this season. Thank you.
All right.
Mayor, just for, I'm trying to add that, Sam, if we could also have our, maybe if you do a presentation here next week to show what types of trees. I don't want the community to think we're cutting all these down. We're just going to leave it that way. That's the impression a lot of the community are getting. So if we could just kind of talk about what we're doing, what we're replacing. We're putting tall trees. A lot of people were upset if we took down the other groups. And, you know, we need to talk about how it's going to look in the future. Thank you.
All right.
Yes, Mayor.
Yes, that's...
I think it's very important, and just to piggyback off of what Mayor Portales Rubio and Councilmember Pacheco said, for people to understand that even though they see a tree that looks really beautiful, there were decisions that had to be made because of the drought. And they would not, because of the drought, they, we would not sustain them any longer and we would start to see them die. Might as well now replace them with drought tolerant plants or trees so that that way we could have a nice landscape for the next 10, 15, 20 years.
Absolutely. Yeah, I would love to come back next week and do a presentation on what we're planning. But also I want to message that, that we do have an article out in the now, right now. And we'll also put it on the front page of our website. So that information is out there. But I would be more than happy to come back next week with a presentation.
All right, thank you. Thank you, thank you, sir. Right, thank you very much. And just to let everyone know that now has various types of trees as well, so can't wait to see that. All right, so at this point, council members wishing to pull any items? Okay, then I'll move for motion for councilman, move for San Collins, as one through four. That is my motion. Second, thinking by councilman Cruz Baca, any objections? See none, so all right, this probably go to item number five, which is the review of the current application and considerations of appointments and numbers for the housing information in the city of Alvin Park. Want to move this to the following meeting. I make a motion.
Excuse me first. Do you know what I'm getting on because of the city of G-10s? Is it on the news?
Susan's not here, right?
It is coming up very close, but I think if we can make a decision at the next meeting, we should be okay.
All right. Because I know that we're worried when they disperse funds. I want to be sure that no one's left.
Thank you, councilmember Cruz Baca. This was my motion. That was seconded by Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco. Any objections? See none, so all right. Item number six, a resolution of the city of Alvin Park in support of the factory city. And so at this point, staff, well, let's go ahead and cover this. I think this, number one, I think this is extremely important, especially when we're seeing what's happening in Washington DC. You all think we're in a different country where you have individuals that unfortunately are unaware that this country is multicolored. And there's no other, there's no other country in the planet earth where all of us come together. And of course, California is probably one of the, one of the largest states that represents that multicolor that we each and every one of us are. Now, it's interesting when you talk about this, because I think they, they target the Mexicans, of course, right? As, as the president has targeted individuals like myself, as the Icahans, or Americans of Mexican descent. And that's unfortunate, shameful, that he's gone on the attack regarding those specific areas. And at the same time, I respect the opinions of everyone. Everyone has their own opinion. Yes, this individual was elected by the electoral college, did take the popular vote. And that, of course, is probably like his biggest hurt to this day. But he needs to recognize that America is not one color, it's multicolored. And it's extremely important for us. In Alvin Park, I met with several groups, which I won't disclose names. It's not, as I mentioned, just brown, the Icahans. It's also Asian population, Filipino population. I was just reading one where he's laying on the corner of over 300,000 Filipinos. And this is incredible when you look at this country. And we definitely need to send a very clear message, like all the other cities throughout Southern California and the state as well. So, councilmembers, have any other questions?
No, I don't have questions, but I would just like to say that I'm sure that we all have either met with organizations and I do want to say that Alvin Park is a faith community based community. And I feel that it doesn't matter which church we belong to or what faith we belong to. Um, we don't have, I believe, a Muslim church or a Jewish temple. So, but we do have other faiths. And it doesn't matter whether you have a faith or not, because it is a faith community here. Father Mike and some of his, Father Jonathan and Portia from one of the council, the church council are here. I have also met with Pastor Rios from the Methodist Church. I have met with Pastor Gilbert from the New Beginnings Church, Pastor Jackson, of course. So I feel that this is extremely important for us to, not because we're copying other cities, but to also voice and say, "We are not going to stand for this." Our country is based off of bringing people of all backgrounds and all religious. When you see the Statue of Liberty, it doesn't exclude people. It says, "Bring me all your people." So, and with that, I think that we need to vote and stay together. If it's anything that us as council members and you, Mayor, let's agree on this and stay together and make this a sanctuary so that people can not be afraid. And we're very closely with our police department. We cannot exclude our police department because it will be a very large part of what goes on outside of the faiths or us as elected officials. So I think that we need to step forward and we need to say, "We're not going to stand for this." And this is what we're going to do, to stand together.
Absolutely.
Mayor.
Yes.
Can I add to that before we take a vote? I think there's another larger piece here that I would like to add. And that's if we could, as a council member, send another support for SB 54, which is a bill currently being passed through the Senate by President Protem Kennedy. And what this would do is it would create a measure, it's a measure that would create protections. It's called border to border. And so that would take away all the stress from the smaller cities because they would do it at the state level. Uh, right now, I believe we just passed the safety committee that's moving forward to appropriations. But I think that as a city, we need to make sure that we support it. And definitely it will take the fear away from a lot of members of this great state for fear of deportation. But another piece, and you know, Councilmember Cruz Baca just mentioned our police department. One of my greatest fears is, you know, the public safety as well. Because right now, being that we're an immigrant community right now, I think that they, I don't want to say free, but they're more inclined to work with our police officers in terms of providing necessary information to either, you know, capture someone that has committed a crime. But if we start, and beneath this fear on the table, what's going to happen is people are going to stop cooperating with the police. They're going to stop sharing information. And I, you know, just, great to think that even, you know, women that are in a situation where they're being harmed will not come forward for fear of deportation. So I really strongly believe we need to not only support what Councilmember Cruz Baca just proposed, but also send a strong message to the state that we're in support of SB 54. Thank you, Mayor.
Absolutely, thank you.
One more thing.
Sort of answering about the screening together. Um, I see some of the members of LA Voice, which are also in, I believe some of the other faith organizations will be included on February the 23rd, which is a Thursday evening at 7 o'clock at the community center. Um, we are sort of joining forces with the leaders and so forth of our community to sort of inform people what, what are the steps that we will be taking? How will we be working? So you will be getting an invitation probably very soon, including our police department and some of the leaders, the school district, so that everyone who participated and attend this workshop so that we are familiar as to what the steps are that we're going to be taking in the very near future. The other one that we need to be supporting as well is Ricardo Lattas, SB 30. He has proposed that in order to build a wall in California, that there be a vote. And I really believe that California...
You're talking about the border, the wall?
Yes, yes.
That's incredible.
And that's SB 30 and that's Ricardo Lattas as well. And I think they can be very vigilant of those two when the elections come and support them. So, thank you. That's, that's mine.
Thank you very much.
All right.
I just wanted to add that, I just wanted to add also that, you know, I agree with all my council colleagues. I think that we definitely support sanctuary city to make sure that, that we provide information to all our immigrants in this community, that we all stand together to make sure, make sure that our immigrants also understand their rights and that they're not being taken advantage of. You know, we're hoping that we can express our views on all these issues and make sure that our, our residents are protected. They know what to do. I know that, I spoke to a number of our communities, you know, our, our local pastors here from one of the large districts in our community, who's Father Mike and Father John. They're both here today because also concerned about the impact to their community and to, to all the cities around us. So I think it's important that we all stand firm. So I think it's important that we all stand firm with all the cities, we are united across the board, from the local government to state legislators, to be able to express our concerns, you know, to, you know, to the other, to the federal government, to the president, to let him know that what he's proposing is just not a solution that is equitable for the whole community. We should look at other alternatives to make our country more secure than what he's proposing.
Say no to the HURO.
Mayor, I need the motion to pass the Ball Park become a sanctuary.
Second. Second, any objections? See none, so congratulations, real quick. And also say, I want to, I know that I spoke to one of the individuals in the organization that I want to make sure that we place it in the Now. So all the individuals are, what's your name, the one in the blue? The Tris, I forget your name. I spoke to the Tris, we want to make sure the Tris that we place something in the Now, and then one that's going to come out next, in the front page, so that all the residents know, specifically those immigrants that are concerned, you know, the rights and the fact that the action the city has taken as well. So we- Where's my guy?
He's right here.
Oh, I didn't recognize you. Okay, alright. Okay, I know we're sitting here.
Real simple, thank you.
Alright, well, we're going to have to take a vote for that, so.
No, no questions.
I'll most of them allow, Father Mike. Even the train's calling. Alright, so at this point, let's go ahead and move over to the rest of the-
Well, mayor, before we leave that topic, I also wanted to put for the next city council, if we could look at, must we get an immigration advocate to help the community to understand issues that impact them on immigration and their rights? Look at something that the city could look into and bring back to the next city council for discussion.
Alright, sounds good. Let me go ahead, there's one more item, a request by Councilmember Cruz Baca to discuss and consider the show of support for Measure H, Los Angeles County Plan to Prevent Homelessness, which will appear under my 7/2017 election ballot for Los Angeles County.
And earlier, I believe you introduced it in the beginning, I did send you a sample letter in regards to supporting Measure H. Measure H is just a quarter of a cent for the tax. So that that way we can bring resources and we can see how we can all collectively. And this also includes all the 32 cities that belong to the council's government, as well as Los Angeles County, as far as supporting Measure H. To see how we're going to bring resources. That portable housing will be included in some of that transitional housing. Every, resources for mental illness, there are different components. It's really long, so I don't want to get into it. But I did send information to all the council members and also to the city attorney, so that we can support Measure H. We do have a representative here that, I don't know if, she didn't speak earlier. I think she didn't know that it was time for her to speak. But there is a representative here for Measure H, and we need that, so.
Would you like that to be in the formal resolution?
Yes, please.
That's the part, that's what I, that's the part.
Wait, hold on, call that councilor, then councilmember.
I just wanted to thank you, Councilman Cruz, I did get that information. I strongly support this measure, I think. We all know the homeless issue, we just literally walk out of our doors and we see, we're driving around in our streets and see a lot of the homelessness. Not only here in our city, but pretty much down to 605 or Los Angeles where you walk away. So I think some of this we need to start to address homelessness, and I think this is a good measure to do that. So, yeah, thank you for reading that out.
Well, you had thanks to everybody who came out for the homeless count last Tuesday. We could go Tuesday. I think we had a lot of police officers, everyone. In comparison to last year, there were a lot more people out there. We were getting counts of 13, 14 per section. Last year, I believe it was only about three or four that we actually came back. It was a little disappointing, because we see a lot, a lot of people at the churches, behind Target, in the alleys, behind the women's club. And we think, gosh, there were a lot more people when we see them during the day or late at night. But this year, there were a lot of people that were actually visible to us. And thank you so very much. Councilmember Garcia was out there, vice mayor Susan Rubio was out there, and a lot of the community, the people from the soccer were out there. So thank you very much, everybody that came out to help us with the homeless count.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Just, Councilmember, one more.
I just want to say that I'm very excited about this measure. You know, the city of Los Angeles passed a measure these last elections, and it was Prop HHH. And it passed overwhelmingly. And working with United Way, I know that United Way, working with LSA and the city council up there, really pushed for this measure. And it's going to bring about 10,000 permanent supportive housing units to the most vulnerable and chronically homeless population in the city of Los Angeles. Now with Prop, with Measure H, you know, expanding to the county is necessary. On any given night, there are about 48,000 homeless in Los Angeles County. That includes families, women, children, seniors, veterans. And so it is so important for us to, you know, to support this and to provide some real substantive services to this population that has been overlooked for far too long. I'm really excited, when I used to work for Mayor Villarosa, I was part of the task force at the time where they brought together an ad hoc committee to talk about homelessness. And we've come such a long way since then. That was 11 years ago. And you see LSA wanting to work with LA County, wanting to work with, you know, United Way and even the VA. And so you see this political will that has developed around the homeless population. And it's been a long time in the making, but we're here and I'm so excited to see this. And I am excited that we can unify on this message. I know last year, there was a discussion on whether we should be part of the homeless count. But this is why it was so important. It was so important to assess the needs of our community, so that when resources became available, and the goal is that major resources will be come available with Measure H. So I want to encourage all of you to follow this closely and to support it in your community, in our community. Thank you, mayor.
Yes.
And I want to reiterate, I, Elter is still here. On February the 9th, there will be, the Ball Park Business Association is holding a breakfast, but it will be Nathisia that will be talking on the homeless initiative. So it is very important, it's 8:00 in the morning, and I really do, anyone that would like information, it will be very informative in regards to the homeless situation. And also, some of the, I want to thank a lot of the other elected officials in other cities that have been so active in the ad hoc homeless committees. Because I believe that everyone has agreed that this is a collective effort. It's not, it's not just our city, it's regional and global. So we need to very, work very closely together, collaboratively. And I think this is a great time for us to do this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Real quick, Chief, also, you got to deal with the homeless issue that we have by Target, the freeway off ramp. This toll, there's coming up this guy, oh, Scott, he just ran the middle, of course. You got to have to deal, I know on previous other occasions, the police were just simply tough to get on, and they do, they move out. But this one guy, I mean, super tall, lady got off her car and just let him pass. So, but never, that was cautious that he didn't get hit. Alright.
Let me go ahead and report on the ICA conference, now we do the training.
I need to as well.
Okay, so since we're on the subject of Measure H, we, I attended the ICA conference over the weekend and heard from a variety of speakers, including Chief Jim McDonald. And he just talked about a lot of the initiatives that were passed in these last elections and the impact on public safety. And, you know, one of them is the drug usage right now and how it's creating some mental health issues. And then that's leading to homelessness, and so, you know, but, but, I mean, there was a lot of, there was hope in his message as well. But very eloquent speaker, very educated on the facts and figures and stat, you know, state of LA County and public safety. There was also some discussion on asset forfeiture and how, there was an SB bill, or 43, I believe it is, that put our local monies at risk of being sent up to Sacramento. And the chief of police fought to keep that local. And it's going to be like an ongoing, you know, fight to make sure that we keep them here locally and we use them as, as we have for vehicles and we really depend on those monies. So those are a couple of items that, you know, I recall.
Yeah, just want to, I was in the K9 one, the actual seminar that they had. And I think it was really enthusiastic to see the function of the actual K9 itself, about the officers being very conscious, so on and so forth. So matter of fact, John Meister, I always forget his last name, Meister, or K9? K9 Sergeant, right? Yeah, they mentioned, but Meister's also, right?
He's the sergeant in charge of the-
Oh, they, his name came up and they complimented him. The West Community Police Department has been one of the leading individuals in the same area. So I just want to share with that, but it was an excellent program. And I hope that maybe in the future, we could bring something like that out to the community. They had the whole demonstration with the dog and everything, so it was really neat. So that's the only thing I have to report. At this point-
Mayor, there's one thing that I would like. And I, only because someone brought it to my attention, and I think it's, I think it's a good policy for us to do from now on. I would like to send out a letter of a thank you for the candidates that applied for the chief position and sort of notify them, unfortunately, you didn't make it, whatever you want to say, or whatever. But I think that we should acknowledge them and thank them for coming out and putting their name in the ballot. So I would like to see those letters.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, and I would also like us to acknowledge formally our interim chief, Bartolani, because I think that he did a great job. And we asked him to step into the position pretty, you know, abruptly. And so he took that on and was very great to work with. So if we can have, you know, some time to present him like a plaque or for the time that he served, I think that would be very nice.
He's always been a professional, a very humble individual, I will say that.
Absolutely, very responsive and so very good to work with. And since we're, we still have interns, I'd like us to acknowledge some very important people here in our audience. I know we talked about some of the electeds. But since we have Father Mike with St. John's, let's acknowledge him. Father Jonathan, I think is St. John's. And then, of course, our assistant fire chief, Jim Rodriguez. He's a, I like to say he's been at Ball Park, grew up here at Ball Park, and it's always great to see you here in California.
Alright, also our commissioners back here, Ms. Viana, there was also Mr. Rodriguez, and I think it's Gina Yala. Sitting next to, I think, is that the water board member? Oh, yeah, we already acknowledged her.
We also have, we also have Portia, who's part of the St. John's Board. And we have Annie Fox back there from LA Voice, who's a representative here and pushing, helping us with campaigning for Measure H. And we got to be so involved, it's also part of our mission, putting this workshop together.
Thank you. Well, at this point, I'm going to take it up, so I acknowledge everyone that's here. Thank you very much.
I got to make a legal report, real quick. I can, in ICA seminar, I'll have to make a report, I can be seminars. So I'll be very, pretty much with councilman, my neighbor C S S, but let me just add. And I won't go through each session, but there was a number of very important and interesting sessions. Some of them, one of the session one was forces behind, behind the use of force. And they discussed a number of issues with use of force, as you know, it's a big issue in the nation. So it was discussed there. Handling critical incidents of active shooter terrorists. And we talked about not just at the national level, but also the terrorists at the local level, and issues that we have there. Demo, we had a police dog that was brought in from Los Cobina. And he did a demonstration with the police dogs and how powerful the dogs are to the police force when they use them. Challenges of public safety and the workforce. We also did MS4 storm drain collaborations and plenty. And so those were a number of the issues that I think were very vital to us. We have a lot of information, I'll bring that to the community and to our city staff, so that you guys can go with that information. That's my report for the January 20 ICA withdrew session. I thank you very much. At this point, before I end, legal counsel, I want to share a couple words.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to correct some information that was out in the paper today, or yesterday, I don't recall. But there was an article about the police chief contract. And it attributed a statement to me, which said that the contract would be retroactive. That is incorrect. I either misunderstood the question or didn't understand it, because that is not a correct statement of fact. The contract for the police chief, if it's negotiated, will not be retroactive, because he's currently working for another law enforcement agency and you cannot receive payment for two law enforcement agencies at the same time. So that statement was incorrect, no retroactive contract.
Alright, thank you very much. At this point, I will move for a chairman of the city council.
Second.
Any objections? See none, so move me to Ball Park. Good evening, everyone. Alright, this point, I'd like to open up the Ball Park Charitable Relief Foundation, Ball Park C, R, F. Today is February 20th. I'd like to open up the public communication. Anyone should speak on this subject? Okay, that's my, we have approximately three minutes.
Good evening, Greg Tull, business owner. I kind of find it a coincidence that after I sent in a public request, that all of a sudden this comes to light, that you guys have this nonprofit organization. And I think that it's really highly inappropriate for the city council to run a nonprofit organization and the city manager to be the director of it. And you guys be all the directors too. I think it should be handed off to somebody that could run it independently. We know Manny Correia couldn't do that properly. And for you guys to collect money on new businesses that come in and do this and sort of intimidate them and they have to give money to these nonprofits like Manny did with this store that opened up over here, they had no clue that this was due through the city council. I don't know, and I have requested the results of if you've given any money out, how much money you've collected. Because I really think this is a farce and it needs to go away. That's my opinion. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Tull. At this point, anyone else who should speak? If not, I will not declare the public communication closed. At this point, I will move for a new business, which is the Ball Park Charitable Relief Foundation Annual Financial Report for the fiscal year end, June 30th, 2016, and that is my motion. Hello?
Second.
Okay, second, any objections? See none, so move. At this point, I will move for a chairman of the Charitable Relief Foundation, that is my motion.
Second.
Any objections?
No, I don't have an objection, but I would like for us to schedule a meeting, so that we could at least have a board meeting in regards to this nonprofit, so that that way, we do have, when you have a nonprofit, the board has to report in 10 minutes. And I would really, I would really be very disappointed if something is investigated, because this, this particular nonprofit helps our children with the status quo. And I would really like for us to be on the up and up with everything, reporting now, commitments, whatever needs to be done, finance, financial reports, whatever, really and truly, we need to look at.
Alright, so CEO will take note of that. So at this point, there was a motion, there was a second. Any objections? See none? Alright, so at this point, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.